Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take your call?
Dave Abdullah?
Here.
Bill Bazey is absent. Robert Coniston?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
Tom Luntzel?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to have Westside Mayor Bill Wyatt lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Madam Chair, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve the Agenda with the addition of 11(c). If we could pass this to the mayor. I thought I may have left a copy, but I may not have. I apologize. Addition of 11(c) as submitted, and this is for June 26, 2018.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
That was the support was Councilman Muscat. Testing, testing. No. It's not working.
It's not working.
Share one.
It's not working.
I'll share one.
Okay. Next item on the Agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. The Minutes from the Regular Meeting of June 12, 2018.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that the Minutes from the Regular City Council Meeting of June 12, 2018 is outlined in 4(a) be approved.
Support.
All those in favor? Are there any?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I think so.
Next item on the Agenda, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Madam Chair? Public Hearings and Comments on Agenda Items.
Pardon?
Public Hearings and Comments on Agenda Items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I had that crossed out. Next on the Agenda, we have Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. Please state your name and limit it to two minutes. Any comment? I know I'm a little off here.
That one. Now it's working. Testing.
No.
The low?
It's not working.
Testing, one, two, three. No. It's not working.
It's not working.
Hey, how about those?
Yeah, she's not going to be here, so.
Oh. This is serious.
Yeah, I got you.
This is Bill Bazey's.
We're, we're, I've got Councilman Muscat.
There's Denise down there. Why don't you take this?
Well, then mine needs, mine's down there.
Testing, testing.
Look at, look at the leadership exercise.
Mine.
Yeah, it's public hearing.
It does not shut off.
That'll be 20 bucks.
I need mine.
Public Hearing Comment on Agenda Item.
Mine is down there.
Doesn't matter, but it's working though.
This, mine doesn't shut off. The other ones do if I speak. Mine is down there. And this is...
I got raised.
Yeah, Miyake's is here. I've got Mayor Pollock's.
There's no wire on it.
And here.
They're all lying, so.
You're right. I'll just shout.
Oh, there you go. All right. Okay, it's Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items, limited to two minutes. State your name and address.
My name's Christina Lazlo. I live on Charlesworth Street. City Council just added an Agenda Item. The department heads and the rest of the audience are not privy to what the item is about, and we'd like possible explanation on it.
Councilwoman, you're the one that just added it. I just got it too.
Absolutely. Yeah, so the item is a City of Dearborn Heights Council Resolution. It's addressing the Act 345, the Public Act of 1937. It's a tax amount that the City Council approved on May 29, 2018. The amount that was approved by the council body was $8,567,983. And the, the Public Act is very clear in the language, and it clearly states that it is based on actual aerial report. And that report was presented at the Act 345 Board Meeting on June 20, 2018. And page two of the document that I have with me in hand clearly states, again, it's page two, that that taxation rate should be $3,178,600, excuse me, $3,178,635. And so that is what that is addressing, is the difference, which is a little over $5 million.
Okay, so since I still have 90 seconds, just really quick, on that, that number is a number that's put together with the Treasurer's Office, with the Act, with the Controller, and doing that number, I don't even know if it was already paid yet, but not contacting anybody is, I believe, physically irresponsible. Excuse me, physically.
Madam Chair, if I may bring forward, and just, and I did ask the question at a previous council meeting and have not received a response. The item is an Agenda and would stand because the Agenda has been approved by this council body, and we can further discuss and take a vote at the time when the item comes forward, and that is under 11(c). Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mayor?
I think there needs to be more control of this body in regards to adding and deleting items on the Agenda. This is irresponsible. I guess tomorrow morning, the HR Director and I, we would probably have to lay off more than half of the employees in the City of Dearborn Heights as a result of this irresponsible resolution. This resolution, you've been here a while, and this resolution is prepared in accordance with the Treasurer's Office, the Controller's Office, and includes, for the police and fire, monies that are available and included under the taxation policy. I invited you to come in, you never came in, so you didn't see the particular resolution, so the burden's on you, not on me, and, and I think this, this is irresponsible. Irresponsible!
Madam Chair, if I may?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'd like to respond to that.
Point of order.
Madam Chair. The, what the mayor is referring to is a legal opinion letter from 2003, and that was under a different mayor, Mayor Canfield. And we need to keep in mind that Act 345 was approved by the, not only the Michigan State House of Representatives, as well as the Senate, as well as a governor that signed off on that and was approved. I would imagine, and again, that is written in third grade language, that even a legal opinion letter from 2003 would not hold up or against something by a House of Representatives or a Senate or a governor. Again, the language is very clear, written in third grade language, very clear, and I will not be accused of misconduct in public office.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, please.
Yes, regarding the, the item, the tax bills have already been printed, so should you guys want to change the millage rate, we're going to have to go back and, you know, we're going to have to redo all the tax bills, we have to reprint the stock, and so the tax bills probably wouldn't go out till mid to end of July, which will then put definitely issue on cash flow, which we've talked about, is, you know, July 1st is a cash flow, and, you know, so even if this was something, it's something that should have been discussed prior to now, because now we're at, you know, we're at the, we're at the deadline, you know, it, you know, it's something that, we had plenty of time to discuss prior to now. So I don't know what your intentions are if this gets approved, but it's going to cause quite a bit of havoc. So, let you know. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Elizabeth Saboda Perry, the HR Director for the city. I just want to make a mention that part of this goes to, the 345 goes to police and fire healthcare, and so I'm very concerned because most of the retirees are police and fire, and healthcare benefits, as you know, are most needed towards kind of the end of people's, as we get older, we need more healthcare. And so there's a lot of money that goes to healthcare. $600,000 is the July required payment to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So if we cut this funding, I'm very concerned as to what this means in terms of real lives and real people.
Thank you.
I couldn't make this up. This is unbelievable.
Madam Chair, I was just going to say, on behalf of the police and fire, we have representatives on the Pension Commission, Pension Body, elected by police officers and firemen. I would hope that before any rash decisions are made, you would get their input. You know, the pension is very in-depth and tricky. I'm not an expert, even though I've been here a long time, but we have representatives. And I know we had a Pension Board meeting last week, and I know Ms. Hicks Clayton was there and questioning a lot of numbers here and there, but those are the experts, the Pension Board people, you know, they're dealing with millions of dollars. So I would just hope before any decision is made, that you talk to the experts. I'm not the expert.
Right. And I know that the, just the retiree healthcare, that's something that's, we've tried to address that in the past, and I, and there's been, there's very strong language that that can't be altered, from, from what I understand, and so just that bill alone is, is an incredible amount of money. So I, I don't think that that's something that, it would require a lot, a lot of conversation. I don't believe that's something that we could afford if, if, if we changed this Act 345.
Madam Chair?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, excuse me. I was going to say, this is public comment only, it's not a debate.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Gary Miyake, Corporation Counsel, Plainfield Street. It doesn't appear that anyone has considered all of the different ways in which this might violate our collective bargaining agreements, if we don't have adequate funding with respect to this. And without some more study, significant study, this would be a very unwise thing to end up adopting.
Okay. One else?
Good point. Violate our collective bargaining agreements all over the place. Unreal.
Good evening. Suhair Abdulha. This is not the first time, actually, the city council passed close to $5 million in the same way it has been passed. This is, I believe, the third or the fourth time. I remember the CSO when we were charged $3.8 million, and everybody knew, the Treasurer, the mayor, the lawyer of the city, everybody knew there was charges for a bond, which is what it was paid. I don't think the city has a penny in surcharge. We have $168 million for the retirement and health, for the retiree. We have zero in the account. We are posted, if you go back to the state, the state posted what we need. We are exceeding basically the 12 percent threshold, which the state asked us to basically fund that specific account. We are at 29.6, I believe. If you go to June 7, and you look at the state retirement accounts, you will find what I'm talking about. We need to do lots of work. We should have done this a long time ago. We should have worked to put money in that account. Dearborn has $64 million in that account. They are at 12.8, which is very close to the threshold. We have zero. We owe money on it, and I believe it is your responsibility to correct that. In the fear campaign that I have to lay off half, I have, I have heard it before, how many he, he laid off. It is on you. Please keep your eyes on the ball.
Thank you. Any other comments? Step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and keep it to two minutes, please.
Good evening. Nabil Fakih. Let's note that the care program, it's not on today's Agenda Meeting, so I want to see if it was gone.
Okay, this is, this is for Agenda Items. We do have public comment at the end.
So I can, I'll wait for the public.
You can come at the end, yes.
I'm not a resident here. I'm the Controller. I am talking regarding your new Agenda Item for the $3 million lowering the millage. That millage was calculated between me, the assessor, Vince, that is in the Pension Department, and I don't know if John had a little, I don't think he really had anything in it. That number is calculated based on the expenditures in the budget, and if you go to Department 200, and you look at 345 Pension, it's $3.1,778,634.90. 345 Insurance is $4.152 million, and then the expenditure below that is, 345 expenditure is $660,000, which I think is like the admin. And then if you go to the Fire and the Police Department's budgets, that covers the people that retire, the first year payment and the subsequent year payments that are in their budgets. The money that we put in the budget, the revenue, is to match all of the expenditures that are anticipated for the year. We, we also added enough just for a little bit of a cushion, just in case of the Home Depot MTT comes back and our revenues fall short, so we rounded it up very slightly, but it's pretty much matching what we anticipate for the expenses for next year. So if you lower it down to the $3.1 million, you will not be covering any of the medical expenses or the retirement expenses for Fire and Police or our administrative expenses. I suggest that you might want to reconsider that idea.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Next item on the Agenda is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve Current Claims 6-1 through 6-26 with the removal of 6-7.
Madam Chair, what, what's the purpose of removing 6-7?
6-7 is the artistic, the public cutting.
Right. Reasing what?
This is the same reason we removed it from the last Agenda. That is per the contract, and there is a grievance filed, so we are recommending not to pay that until, at this time, until that is resolved.
Okay, but when we get something like this, it's already a bill, a work that's already been done, so I, I don't know, and it's already been budgeted for it, so I don't know if we could just say, well, we're not going to pay you $10,000.
So I made the motion, if there's a second or not.
Okay.
Excuse me. I have to say something. If I'm out of order, then tell me.
Okay.
They've already, they've already done the work.
Understood.
How do we not pay them when they've already done the work? If you want to decide tonight that you don't want them to do it anymore, then tell us that.
All right. Point of order. Let's figure this out.
We have a motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Just shake stuff up like this as you go along. This is out of control. It's out of control.
Out of control.
People following people around the city, it's out of control.
Can you please help him?
No, I'm not leaving.
No, I'm not asking you to leave. I'm just asking you to calm down, please.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
But not because I was told by email that I had to be here tonight.
No, I'm not asking you to leave. I just asked you to calm down.
I was told I had to be here tonight.
Well, first, let's see if there's a second to the motion, but I understand the Councilwoman's point, but I agree with Councilman Abdullah. You don't just not pay a bill after the work's been done. You, you, when I was in the legislature, the City of Detroit had terrible problems because they were two or three years behind in the paying of their bills. For whatever reason, they, so there may be an issue, but I don't know that the, the way to address it is just to, to not, to remove a claim and not pay it. We can ask the department questions about this bill.
We can do that. Let's do that, then.
I think, may I make a recommendation? I'd like to see some discussion, maybe go to a study session. Let's, if we can, if we, if I amend my motion to include that, to move, to have a study session on this, because I guess what I'd like to know from the attorney, from Mr. Miyake, there's a grievance, if that's worked through, and let's say the union wins that, right? All right? All this money, because this is now with, between, now, they've been cutting that since May, so they've, this is a private contractor's been cutting it since May, May, and now the first week of June, this is about $30,000. So if the union wins this, do we have to pay those, that union, those employees?
That could be possible.
That difference, or that amount? Because now, if that's the case, then we've paid, and don't get me wrong, Director McIntyre, I agree, they've done the work, and I agree. I mean, this isn't about, excuse me, please do not interrupt from the back. You want us to be respectful. I have the floor.
Excuse me. Let's get some order here.
Okay? So they have cut it. I agree, okay? But, and this isn't about their service, it's about what's going on with the union here, right? So you've now paid them, let's say, $30,000. The union wins this, they get $30,000. That's $60,000, if that's the case. I just want clarification, please.
Well, if, if...
Excuse me.
Generally, I would defer to Labor Council, but on something like this, essentially, since what you're looking at is having paid both amounts regardless?
Hmm.
All right? Because they've done the work, and if you lose the grievance, you may have some sort of remedy, but the remedy is not necessarily going to be that all the money that the union would want would necessarily end up being paid. And even if it was, you're not improving your position at this time by failing to pay a contractor who's already done the work. Essentially, you're worsening your position because you're increasing your exposure to be sued for the work that was already done and we're contractually bound to pay for. So, so essentially, if you're going to withhold payment from Artistic, you aren't going to end up improving your position. You're just going to worsen your position by increasing your exposure.
So may I ask another question? Just for clarification. Who's here from DPW that might be able to answer the question? I'd like to understand, because what we were told last time was DPW is refusing overtime, which I'm trying to understand, why are they refusing overtime, especially if they filed a grievance? That doesn't make sense to me. Why would you file a grievance if you're refusing overtime? That means you're not interested.
Okay. Do we have someone from DPW here?
I'm serious. I said DPW, please.
DPW.
Is there a representative here? Please.
Are you?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Can you come up to the microphone and tell us who you are, please?
Yes, my name is Sean Moylan, Water Superintendent. So my first thought would be that in the grievance procedure, if it is won by the union, that it would probably be a policy change, since the work is already done, and overtime has been offered for other jobs, so it's not like they actually lost money. They just want the contractor, is what the union wants, and under my understanding, because again, this is out of the Highway Department, I'm not, you know, I don't know all the particulars, but my assumption would be that the, if the grievance is won, it would be a policy change, and that the contractor would stop cutting it, and then Highway Department would start. Because they have been with a limited amount of people, they have been being offered overtime for other jobs, tree trimming, et cetera.
So there will be a pol... Oh, go ahead.
So in other words, you have 100 percent utilization?
I'm sorry, what?
You have 100 percent utilization of all of your employees?
Of the ones that are willing to, to work, yes.
Some have refused overtime.
Do we want to?
So I, you know, with, with all due respect to the Councilwoman, this is something that probably needs to be dealt with on a study session basis or an administration thing of why this continues to happen. They did do the work, and, and I agree that if we hold back their money, then we're still going to have to pay it in the end anyway, and even, even more if they sue us. Okay? You know, so that could hurt us in the end, too. So I, I, I would not be in support of the motion at this point.
So I will amend my motion, and we can include 6-1 through 6-26, because I concur.
Support.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Luntzel?
Now, a grievance could take the rest of the summer, or longer. I'm assuming, right? These things don't just happen overnight, so this could, the contractor could be cutting grass for the remainder of the summer.
If I may, defer to the mayor's administrative assistant. She's normally involved in more grievances.
That grievance hasn't even gotten to step three. It's a function of the mayor per the charter and the policy and procedures, or the mayor's representative. In that case, it's named in the TPOM contract. It's not at the step three, um, step yet, which is the mayor's stop to answer and hear it. It was premature. I don't want to go into exactly what the union is doing, but if the union were to win, putting Sean on the spot is not correct. If the union were to say, mayor, we should have been cutting, and the mayor said agree, they would have to show that they had a loss of wages, because we have time cards, and because we have proof of everybody that was asked, people that turned down, people that did work, there is no loss of wages. So that's what they would have to prove, and that's what the arbitrator does. In regard to the timeline, because it's not even at the step three yet, you would need to have a couple weeks for the mayor to hear it, a couple weeks, 10 days, business days for him to respond, and then their choice to go to arbitration, which usually takes about three months.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, I would defer to both the mayor's administrative assistant and to Mr. Miyake, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, 90 percent of the time, these matters are mediated, so it's not like somebody's going to go to court and lose. So, so, you know, we don't want to mix up apples and oranges. If the Councilwoman is questioning the policy of why outside contractors are doing work that union workers can do, there are other ways to address it, other than just say, we're not going to pay the vendor's bill.
And no, no matter what happens, they're going to be paid. No matter whether the, the union wins or loses, these guys are going to be paid. And I'm not saying this is right or wrong, I'm just saying, I mean, these guys did the work, they got to be paid.
They're going to get paid.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Madam Chair? I had, I had a question for either the mayor or Ken Grable. I just wanted to get a clarification on item number 6-8 and 6-20. The amounts on there, on the second page, they seem to be pretty similar as far as what we are paying out in terms of North Dearborn Heights, paying for 129 residents, $25, and then D7 Dads Club. What is the difference between the two? Unless it's Ken Grable, or maybe you could answer.
They provide, the organizations provide rosters and, and addresses, and so based upon that submission is how they get paid.
Okay, actually, maybe she...
Your, your representing Ken?
Yeah.
Okay.
Deputy might be able to... I'm just wondering on the differences between the two. No, I'm talking about the two being item 6-8 and item 6-20.
It's exactly what the mayor said. We're supplied with a roster, and then we have a certain amount that's budgeted for, and Ken comes up with that budget amount based on what the percentages have been in the past, and then they take the total amount and they divide it by the number of residents that they have. So they probably, one of the groups have more or less residents than the other one.
Okay, but they're, but they're both on the back, if you look at the second page, on both pages, North Dearborn Heights Baseball League, and another one is D7 Dads Club. I'm just trying to make sure that they...
Oh, you know, it looks like a duplicate. You said...
That's what I'm saying.
One's for the Dads Club and one's for North Dearborn Heights.
But it's a duplicate.
So is this a, is this a... See, the 6-8 is for the Dads Club. That gives us $4,625, and 6-20 is for North Dearborn Heights Baseball League.
Okay.
Which gives us $3,225.
Yep, I see that.
Even though they...
But on the back, they use the same number, they rewrote the same numbers. Okay. Now it makes sense. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, am I supposed to be on behalf of Bill Zimmer, or should
Madam Chair, can I just ask, am I supposed to be on behalf of Bill Zimmer, or should I be having a conversation with Artistic? Because I think they're getting ready for another cycle of city cuts this week. Should I tell them to stop? Stop cutting the city properties?
Well, let's continue, and we'll have a committee meeting when, when the chairperson...
Yeah.
Is that fine?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, next we have consideration of bids, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Coniston, award of bid in return of bid bonds, two true reach in freezers, one for the Eaton and one for the Berwin Center.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the, recommended that the bids to purchase two freezers for Eaton Center and for Berwin Center be approved as, and also the bid bonds returned to the other bidders as outlined in 7A.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. Treasurer Riley, salary request.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Um, move council approve the request by Treasurer John Riley, this is a salary increase. This was included in the corporate fund budget that we did approve on May 29th for Deputy Treasurer to $55,614.64, and this is commencing July 1st, 2018, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I don't understand why this had to be on since it was already approved.
It didn't.
It's just, um...
It, in my opinion, it did not, because it's within the allowable amount of the budget, and also the deputy and the clerk's office. And I indicated to the city clerk that it was not necessary to put a letter on that. As long as it's within the budget amount, they'll get paid.
Okay. So what would we like to do at this point?
Madam Chair, I just, you know, my, the past practice for my office is, I've, I had three communications to this council and approvals with motions attached, asking for the deputy treasurer's pay to be changed. And so I continued with my past practice of how I've operated the treasurer's office and that. So if it's a little too much, it's a little too much, but I don't think it's any harm done. But I'm just consistent with what I've been doing for the last 25 years, and this would be the fourth time I came to this council with the change in the pay to the deputy treasurer. In fact, in the past, the clerk and I would do it together and sign it, that both deputies would get a certain pay raise. So I went solo this time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Next, we have Comptroller Vance, corporate fund budget amendment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that we concur with our comptroller and approve the amendments to the budget as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Mayor.
Just a highlight for all the council, we tried to stay within the funds, and the, what caused most of this was the revenue for sidewalks, that program we offered, and that was $200,000. And then the other thing is a deposit for the golf course. So that pretty much is the two items that make up this balance.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next, we have Emergency Manager and Public Information Officer, Ann Crapp, laptop, computer, and software package per...
I think we missed 9C.
9C.
Ooh, I'm sorry, it was Comptroller Vance again. I'm sorry, same person. It's Road Funds Budget Amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the budget amendments as outlined by Comptroller Linda Vance, as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we do have the Emergency Manager and Public Information Officer, Ann Crapp, laptop, computer, and software package purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Bob Ann Crapp, Emergency Manager and Public Information Officer, to request council's authorization to purchase five HP ProBook 640G2 laptop computers and five licensed Microsoft Office Software Package for use in the city's emergency operations center. The total cost of the two, of the total items, is $6,995.00. And these computers will be retained exclusively for use in the emergency operations center, and will not be available for use for any other purposes. And they'll be ordered with the MS software and purchased and installed. And this is as outlined in item 9D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, ballistic protection for EMS units purchase.
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the purchase of six sets of ballistic protective equipment to be in service for the three squads as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Uh, can we, can you describe what, what ballistic protective equipment is?
Yeah, it's, it's just like the police have, it's a, it's a bulletproof vest and a bulletproof helmet. And the reason why that the firemen need them now is, uh, active shooters like Columbine or some of the horror stories we've seen across the country require a different response than we've, than we've had traditionally before. We would, we would stay outside and wait for the SWAT team would come, and then they'd clear the scene and they'd bring, bring everybody out. Well, since Columbine, all the rules have changed, uh, they don't wait for SWAT anymore, the patrolmen go in, and then we would go in right after the patrolmen with our own police. And we, this is why we would need the, the protective gear to go in and get the sick and, or the injured and get them out.
So currently, you have no protective gear like that?
No. Nope.
And Madam Chair. Just on a note, I mean, it's really unfortunate that a firefighter lost, I think there were two of them this week.
In California, yes.
That lost their lives.
Yeah.
Because, you know, going into a scene, and I think it's just a really sad state of affairs when it comes to that, that you cannot enter into a scene because, you know, your life is at risk, your life is already at risk, you know, going into a fire. But now you have people shooting at you on top of it. So unfortunately, this is what's necessary.
Yeah.
Keep our, our first responders safe.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
I mean, at this particular point, since we're on that note, I'd like to do a little shout out to two of the Crestwood High School's teachers, who I seen on the news yesterday, have come up with a new app for this, in case this type of emergency happens at the school, where it'll notify, I mean, I don't know, it's called a TAB program, so I don't know all the details on it, I just happened to see it on the news. So, I was very excited to see them on the news and come up with these types of applications, try to protect our residents and students. So shout out to the Crestwood High School teachers, two of them, I forgot their names, I'm sorry.
Matt Rednauer and Rachel. Let's help me out, Lynn.
Josette.
Josette.
Yeah, so congratulations to them.
I can remember the first name. You're right. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we also have Fire Chief Brogan, house and, I'm sorry, hose and hose appliance purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Aye, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan and authorize the purchase of the new fire hose and related appliances. Total cost is $4,748.70, payable upon receipt as outlined in item 9F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, again, Fire Chief Brogan, demo fire truck purchase and supplemental information.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Fire Chief David Brogan, requesting the, for the council to enter into an agreement to purchase a new demo fire truck from R&amp;R Truck Sales. The cost is $726,570, with a down payment of $250,000 from capital outlay, with the remainder to be financed over five years. This would be a quint-style truck, which will combine a traditional fire engine with a ladder truck. This means that this will function in all the usual capacities of our fire engines with the added ability of a mounted aerial ladder. The current fire line engine in the north end is 22 years old, with over 120,000 miles on it, and is no longer fit for the first line daily use. And this is as outlined in item 9G.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
I would like to ask that you include, because we haven't worked all the financing, the treasurer's got to come back, that this be purchased after July 1st, 2018. It actually was in next year's budget. Part of the motion, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Are there any Tifa funds involved with this purchase?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to address this a little bit. I had a couple of different conversations with the chief and a couple of our great firefighters that we've got, and I went, I went over to look at it myself, because sometimes it's kind of hard to relate to this stuff, just looking at it on paper, and I was able to see, although these guys keep them very, very clean, uh, so we think of them as new, until I was able to really look at the one from 1990 with 120,000 miles. And it's, it's definitely due based on, I mean, I'm not an expert on it, but you could tell. It, it's time for a change, and this is going to be really, really good for our residents. So one of the challenges, the biggest reason for this is to get the ladder truck, that's the main thing that they need. And one of the challenges that I was speaking with a lot of the firefighters and the chief on this is, with the homes being bigger and bigger, and we have different commercial buildings that are in our city, that are a little bit higher, this makes their jobs much easier A, but also safeguards a lot of our residents. So I am totally in favor of this, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Councilman Muscat.
Our, the, our person who, our councilman who did the motion has to amend his motion to add July 1st.
Okay, I'd like to amend the motion to add July 1st as stated by the mayor.
Councilman Coniston supports it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we have Library Director McCaffrey, library budget amendments.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Dearborn Heights Libraries Director Michael McCaffrey and approve budget amendments as presented in 9H.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wenzel, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Gavin, law enforcement policy manual update subscription.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve payment to Lexipool?
Lexipool.
Lexipool LLC for the subscription of law enforcement policy manual update. The total cost is $16,721. This is going to be a recurring annual charge, and it'll be paid for through the police department motor fuel account as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Aye, excuse me.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Can you give us a brief description on what that manual is, or what...
Right now, we're getting accreditation through the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, so we signed up with Lexipool. They're reviewing all our policies, updating all our policies. Also, what our officers can do is say the midnight guys, we send them, they go onto the computer, and then they'll take a little seminar or something, then they got to answer the questions. So it's a training manual, and it can be done online. So a lot of agencies are going that way.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, Police Chief Gavin, pro-laser four bundles purchase.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve the purchase and payment for, for, for pro-laser four bundle, which is four lasers. They also added $100 to this estimate for shipping charge. The total cost for the lasers is $11,268 to be taken from the police department capital outlay as outlined in 9J.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I hate to do this, but these are, you know, tens of thousand dollar items. Can you explain what these lasers are that you guys are using?
Again, these are the lasers that we use. You can use radar, or you can use laser. It's a handheld, you know, instrument with a red dot like you see the hand pointer lasers, and that, it's a little more accurate than radar. You point it on the bumper of the vehicle, and then you can get to speed. So the bundle just needs, includes batteries and some handheld stuff, stuff that can be adapted into the computer and that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, it's actually a case that kind of, you have to lay a much stronger foundation to get in the radar. So none of the departments use it anymore.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, Police Chief Gavin, X26P tasers purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move to concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin and approve the purchase and payment for the tasers that are purchased from Axon Enterprise. The total cost looks to be $1,900 as outlined in 9K.
Second. Supported by Councilman Coniston, any discussion?
I know what those are.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, next, we have Police Chief Gavin, True Narc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer Purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Chief is on a shopping spree there. Spending half our meeting on you here.
End of the budget.
Huh?
End of the budget.
Yeah. All right, so I move that we concur with Police Chief Lee Gavin for the purchase of the equipment, True Narc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer. These are handheld narcotics testing devices. It is currently being used by MSP, and is, it is faster and much safer than the traditional narcotic, narcotics testing devices used today. True Narc easily identifies narcotics with the primary function of ensuring that law enforcement personnel exposure to emerging threats such as car fentanyl, car fentanyl, and fentanyl are as limited as possible as outlined in item 9L.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, bucket truck purchase.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that council agree with Public Works Director Bill Zimmer on the purchase of a bucket truck from Cannon Equipment for the price of $160,205 as outlined in 9M. And the payment upon delivery would be appreciated. I make the motion, and I, I think this is, as of July 1st in the new budget year, and I think it's a much needed piece of equipment, because the one that we've got, they're repairing it all the time, and it could be dangerous to our employees.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Question for a representative.[1666.25]
Question for Representative. Is that a bucket truck that someone goes up in the tree trim, or?
Yes, it's a 60-foot aerial, so when the employee's all the way up there, 60 feet air.
Now, do you, is it replacing the existing one, or are we going to do something with the existing one?
The existing one is just about 18 years old now, and we're going to be trading that in.
It's going to be scrapped.
And it, like Councilman Muscat said, it's been costing us quite a bit to keep it operating because now anything that breaks, we have to send it out to a certified dealer to make the repair, so we can keep the truck certified to use it.
Okay, Councilman Muscat?
That's, I was going to, I was going to add that portion, and we've been spending a lot of money on that. I've been watching that aerial truck expenditures for quite some time, and you do have to have authorized personnel repair it. It gets to be a liability. They're not, they're not fun to be up there when the thing doesn't work.
Thanks a lot.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is Ordinances and Resolutions. We have our first reading of proposed ordinance H-18-05, Establishment of a Commission on Women and Girls.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that ordinance H-18-05 be considered read for the first time, and move this item to a study session. And I'll let someone, if they would, just second the motion, and if I may, share some comments from the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah seconds it. Any discussion?
If I may, Madam Chair. Just for the public's information, this is something we've been working on for several months, and I do wish to thank the mayor, as well as our attorney, and several people, including Ms. Mohammed, who's here. And there's been several residents who have had input. But this is a commission, a new commission in our city that is established. It's again, the Commission on Women and Girls, and the purpose of the commission is to bring attention to and to monitor issues relating to concerns and opportunities and rights of women and girls, and will work with organizations, social service agencies, to advance gender equality and promote public discussions on issues that impact women and girls. The commission will work with the mayor, city council, and other elected appointed city officials to make recommendations that promote policies that address concerns and promote opportunities for women and girls, and explore issues and conduct research on matters that are important to women and girls, and celebrate the accomplishments. So, I think it's really important to have a study session, so we encourage and engage our residents. We want to hear from you, and so when we schedule that, if we can promote that, so we can hear from you, we want your input on this as well. And I look forward to that and the second reading. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam Chair. Yeah, I just want to say that I had the opportunity to go to the first meeting that this, well, it hasn't been established as of yet, but the proposal for the commission that they had at the library. And that's why I tell you, I was pretty impressed with just the direction that they're going and the things that they're doing on behalf of women and girls, so I'm in full support of this. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Resolution. City-owned vehicles properly marked with seal of Dearborn Heights.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
For the record, it was, I should have my name on this, this is my resolution. And this is a, it's a long resolution, and I don't know if we have to read it in its entirety, but the synopsis is that I'd like to see all of city cars that are not marked be marked with the seal of Dearborn Heights, and only the vehicles that are exclusively used by the Police Department for police work be excluded. We have many vehicles that do not have the seal of Dearborn Heights, and there's no reason why people cannot recognize those vehicles as city-owned vehicles. These both cars and trucks belong to the taxpayers. They don't belong to the people who are driving them. They belong to the taxpayers, and they want to know when they see one of these vehicles, it's theirs. Also, some of these vehicles do come up to a home or through a neighborhood. Good safety thing is they know it's somebody that works for the city. And right now, there are, there are many vehicles that don't have them, and they should be marked. So, I'm asking city council to look at this and make a motion that city council adopt this resolution.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat. I can remember two years ago, I think it's about two years ago, there was individuals going around and saying they were with our water department. And I can remember senior residents letting them into their homes. And I can remember these individuals getting robbed, and that's a problem. You know, we do not want any of our residents to be victimized, and I wholeheartedly agree that our vehicles should be marked, you know, for our residents' safety. I don't see the harm in that. What I see is the negligence in not marking those to protect our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'd just like to get a clarification, because quite honestly, I'm not sure if this is even within our jurisdiction to be able to determine this and push in that direction. I mean, I see your point, Councilman Ray, but at the same time, our primary function as a council is budgeting and, and, and new laws, and something like this, to me, would be more, the department heads' decision, the particular department heads', because I had a conversation with a couple of different department heads, and some of them had some serious concerns about this, you know, as far as some vehicles may not need to have the emblem on there. If there's some specific you're concerned about, it's probably better that we just talk about the elephant in the room and just address it, because otherwise, it's, you don't just rely on, on just what's on the car. Like, for example, with my business, and I have nothing on my car, I mean, there's no danger for me pulling up to a house, and when they need ID, I show my ID. Or, in this case, whatever particular department or whatever particular employee, they show their ID. You don't necessarily have to have that on a car. So, if there's a concern, I'm just saying, if there's a concern, I'd like to know about it so that we can make a better decision.
Well, you know, it comes down to, we also get requests from the Police Department to get their cars marked, and to put all the lights on them. It does come through us. So, that's-
Well, that's part of budgeting, okay? But I'm saying, in terms of other departments-
We can budget for this.
No, because I know one of the, at one point, one of your concerns was the ordinance department, and I know those have, as far as I know, pretty much all been done, the blue trucks. That was of concern. Is there, and again, I'm just, I'm just saying, enlighten me, because I don't know which specific departments you're talking about.
I have a resolution on the table, okay? And I think it's a legitimate resolution, and it's been seconded, and your concern is well noted. I have how I feel about it in the resolution.
Okay, any further discussion?
Could I make a comment, Your Honor? I would just hope that somewhere in there, you would allow the chief or whoever's running the Police Department at the time to decide which cars. We have a lot of cars where the guys go out.
No, it allows for it. You're exclusive.
It's noted in here.
It didn't, it didn't seem clear, but you know, we have some guys that go out-
It says for the Police Department that you exclusively use your vehicles, that you exclusively use is your discretion.
Okay. As long as we have that discretion, a lot of cars will respond and run.
Yeah, that's something I would never take away from the Police Department.
Okay, detectives in that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Opposed by Councilman Abdullah. Motion is carried.
Madam Chairman?
Mayor?
Thank you, thank the council for the input. This is an administrative rather than a legislative matter, and we certainly will take your resolution into effect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Communications. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Youth Voter Encouragement Day Proclamation.
Madam Chair, do we need to go back to 11C?
No, we got to go back to 11. She, the one that was added was 11C.
That was added from 11C.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. 11C, City of Dearborn Heights Council Resolution.
All right, Madam Chair, move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Counsel, I'm going to support this so we can discuss this.
Let's just maybe-
Okay.
I mean, we've got to be able to discuss this, and I don't know how else we're going to do it, other than support it. I went through this, and I read it, and I believe that I had a meeting with the mayor in his office and had asked him a question, and he answered it openly and honestly about monies that were being used from Act 345 for other payments. And he showed me a letter that was an opinion from an attorney back, I believe, before he was mayor in 2003, if the, if the date is correct. Again, I have a problem reading the act. It says, you know, I know we had people come up and talk about Act 345 and, and the monies that the police chief come up and the fire chief came up, but I guess what's being questioned in my mind is the use of Act 345 money, which is fire, police and fire only, being used outside police and fire.
It's not.
So, but again, that's, that's what I'm getting on this. So, if, if, if the money is being used outside of Act 345, I too don't want to be part of that, because that would be a violation of the act.
Me too. I agree.
So, we, so how do we go about, I mean, we saw the actuary report that stated that we needed 3.1 mil, just call it 3.1 million dollars, and we are being taxed on 8.5, 8.5 million dollars. So, where does that five, other 5 million going to go? I know the comptroller got up and spoke, but I wasn't exactly clear on what she had said. We need a good clarification of monies being spent from Act 345 to make sure that only police and fire are receiving these benefits.
Linda?
Linda?
The number that appears, and I didn't see the actuarial report, so I can't say what it said, but it appears to me that the, the report is only talking about the pension portion of the Act 345.
The contribution.
Yeah, the contribution portion. Like I said, I have not seen it, but when I look at our budget, and the pension portion in, that we budgeted for is 3.178 million, pension only. If you look on the budget that you approved, the 3.45 is the insurance portion. If you limit it to the 3.178 million, then there is no retiree insurance for police and fire.
And that's, and that's limited to police and fire only.
Police and fire only. That's the only class that benefits from this Act 345.
Now, the, 3.178 million is what the actuary tells us.
And that's the pension portion.
And then 3.45 is for what?
There's 4.152, which is the health insurance portion of Act 345 for police and fire. Then there is a 660,000, which I think is considered the administrative.
So, that takes us to 8.5 million.
And then you add the, yep, that plus the anticipated retirement payouts for fire and police only, and it's within their budgets. If you add all of those expenditures together, it pretty much adds up to what we are asking for the millage. And I calculated this, like I said, with Vince, because I've never done this before, and our assessor to make sure that we have the proper millage rate to capture the amount that we anticipate to match the expenditures.
So, I mean, we jumped, we jumped from a year or two ago from 2. some million dollars in Act 4, or 3, 3 million dollars in Act 345, to 8.5 million in our budget.
One second, let me pull out the revenue section here, again.
I know what the millage was, that we have it, I have that, so I want to know what the big, how the big jump was all of a sudden.
When looking at from prior, and I haven't been here prior, so I mean, I don't know, but last year, I think we captured, what was it, 8.3? It's just retirees.
There's more retirees.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the police and fire get their fair share. I don't want it going-
And that's all this is.
I don't want it going anywhere else. I mean, it's their money that we're talking about.
Trying to find the remedy page. I know, I might have left it at my desk, but the revenue section from the prior year, we only went up, you know, not a whole lot. It was-
There are more retirees. There are more. That's why we're hiring so many people, because we're replacing people.
That's understandable, but we're talking 5 million dollars. There's, you know, the correlation of 5 million dollars here. That's kind of hard for me to understand.
Lee Gavin's, you know.
I don't know if we, we could actually have the actuaries come in and go through this with us.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I'd just like to suggest to our council, our, you know, my fellow council members, I mean, something like this, with all due respect to Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, to get something like this, you know, that many numbers, this many different variables, this many different opinions, and to make a decision on something this big, right here, right now, when this was given us just before the start of the council meeting, I tell you for myself, I'm definitely not prepared to vote on this. And if anything, this should be going either to a study session or on the next agenda date, so that we could ask questions, meet with the comptroller, maybe the mayor, et cetera, et cetera, to make sure we make the right decision on this, because there's just too many numbers flying around, and for us to make a decision like this, I mean, honestly, I try to, I know she gave it to me, and I tried to read it just before the start of the council meeting, but there's just too many variables involved for us to make a decision this quick on it.
Councilman Constance?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would it be out of line to ask for the actuaries to come in and talk to us with it, too?
You can, but it's, it, the actuarial piece is one component, which you can look in the, the report. And, and the other, two things. One is that, this has been going on, what'd you say, Johnson, since you've been here before?
Well, since Mayor Canfield.
Yeah, it's, this is not something new, okay? We kind of inherited this, but it's a way, this is what we've been doing. Mayor Canfield got a legal opinion justifying this, and we've continued along that line. And-
I guess when I asked you the question in your office, and I don't know if you want me to say what I said, I asked you if you were using Act 345 to pay retiree healthcare pensions, and you said yes, and you showed me the letter. I guess I was thinking that you were paying for everybody's out of, out of police and fire.
No.
Okay? That was my, the opinion that I took from that conversation, and I'm sorry if I took it that way, but-
Well, I gave you, let you read it.
Yes, I did read it.
And, and in there, it limited specifically, it said it can only be used for police and fire, so.
You know, and these are audited numbers as well, if I could just add that. We look at actual invoices. We pay as you go, so the healthcare costs, when Plant Moran comes, they audit, they make sure that the money allocated from 345 is covering people that would be eligible for 345. So, it's audited. We spend a lot of time going through those files. They, we have, we know who exactly is in that category and who isn't in that category, and there isn't any funds misappropriated.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
We can't put the cart before the horse. So, so if the councilwoman has an issue, or the councilman regarding, we can't just have this thrown in front of us and then vote to change our millage rate. It's, we can't put the cart before the horse, just to echo what Councilman Abdullah said earlier. If you'd like, I can go back in my office and grab the revenue section to show you the difference from last year to the year before, but if you look at your budgets, it didn't go from 3 to 8. It was in the eights already, and it went from whatever, 8, let's say, 8.3 to 8.5. I'm not going to say proof positive with the numbers, I don't know at the top of my head, but it wasn't such an astronomical difference from last year's millage capture to this year.
If we can have 10 minutes before the next meeting, we could show that. The reason, as the treasurer pointed out, the council already approved the millage rates. The bills have been prepared. It's no significant difference from last year, from one tax year to the other, but we certainly were, were operating in the same way that we've operated in the city for the last 20, 25 years, and, and we thought we were doing the right thing.
Counsel-
Councilman Muscat?
I, you know, this is a hard decision, and I'm with, you know, with reading this, and I know this. I'm just wondering if we can find a way that, you know, we could always bring this back also. I mean, we could always do that on budget stuff all the time.
Let's just do a study session.
I think we need to get more information before we do anything rash. I mean, July 1st is, we're here, okay? And we got to make those payments, so I think we need more information before we do anything and have an open session to talk about this.
Great, thank you, Councilman.
So, therefore, I'd have to amend my motion, and you are the supporter, so I would amend it. Study session, refer to study session, because some of that information is not really available.
Oh, you're going to amend.
Excuse me? What?
I don't even know if we want to do a, do that.
We need to review, I mean, we need to talk about it.
I know we need to talk about it, but-
There's a lot of flu sentence here, because we needed, because a lot of that's not here. So, I'd like to, yes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wensel?
I know some of this was based on a legal opinion from 25 years ago, or whatever it was. I don't know what legality a legal opinion has, or something. That's something we should look into in the study session, I think, this whole thing, not just 10 minutes before a meeting.
Well, you know, then, then why don't we just have an amended motion that we have legal counsel look at that old opinion letter and see how valid it is for today's day and age? I mean, it's an old, old opinion, and will it hold in a court of law in, for the state of Michigan? I don't know that.
I, I know I did not prepare the opinion. I assume at that time, Labor Counsel was Kurt Heisey, who was at that time, um, I don't know if he was the mayor's executive assistant, or-
Came from a legal firm.
So it was Cummings McLory at that time he was working for. He'd been Mayor Cantfield's, um, executive assistant, and then he ended up going back into private practice and, and was legal counsel, labor counsel. So if the council wants me to, uh, research, I'll, I'll research it.
May I ask a question? Because I thought the last meeting, that was a private letter. I thought, Mr. Mayor, you said it wasn't foible, it was a private letter?
Never said that. I let the three councilmen I met with, I, I not only showed it to them, I said, if you want to read it, but there's, I'm not hiding anything. I actually got a copy of it, because when I first became mayor, uh, the city auditors asked me for the justification on the cost, the police and fire cost, and so I had to seek out a copy of that opinion letter. And I kept it, because every two or three years, uh, someone from Plant Moran will come in and say, uh, "Do you still have that legal opinion?" And I go, "Yes, I do," and I, and, and they make, some of them make a copy of it, and, uh, and that's why I still have it. But it's very clear, it said it, it's restricted to police and fire retirement cost.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have, do we have the actual firm that did the, the opinion to do it, or?
Cummings McLory did the opinion back then, and it was Kurt Heisey who was, I believe, an associate at that time.
But there's still legal attorneys for the city.
Yeah, I mean, you could potentially have them do an opinion with regard to that, uh, to, uh, look at it, or I could end up doing it.
They mainly, they mainly do, uh, you know, they set up and defend the MM RMA, the, you know, Councilor Miyaki could look at the opinion and, um-
I'm just having a harder time hearing you, Councilman, because of the fan, so, I'm sorry.
Steering business your way, so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I, I understand, but, uh, maybe we should just have the original, uh, group of people that did the opinion to look at it again, to make sure it'll hold water.
Okay.
Because, you know, we don't want, you know, I don't want to be in a position of doing something, and I don't think anybody else here wants to do that.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion?
The, the motion was amended to refer to study session, um, because that's what I've heard, you know? So you're asking to amend it even more?
To just have council look at it, so.
So studies, no, I think, so, still want a study session. We don't want to change that part of the amendment.
Have them look at it, too?
So include two that, amend to study session and, and refer to Mr. Miyaki, right? To take a look at that.
To me, or to Cummings McLory, however you want to do it.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Madam Chair. Councilman Muscat?
Study session, and then after that, decide if we want to have, uh, council look at the, uh-
That's not going to help us any.
No?
That's not going to help us at all. We need a real, true opinion, an updated opinion, before we have a study. Why have a study session and then go through it all over again? You have the opinion, you come in, they give their opinion, everybody's happy, and then we go forward. I believe that's the way we should do it.
Do the opinion and then study session?
Yes.
That order.
This is why you should-
You amended it? Okay, so the motion's been amended to do a-
Yes.
Opinion letter and then a study session after we receive the opinion letter?
And Councilman Muscat was the supporter, yes.
Okay, Councilman Muscat supported. Any further discussion?
Before you vote on that, Council Chair, can you clarify who that opinion letter is coming from?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Who's the opinion letter from?
Well, originally, I believe it was McLory.
Cummings McLory, Davis and Nacho, I would be willing to do it, if you want them to do it, I'd be fine with that, however you want to do it.
Yeah, you just-
Let's go back to the original, I guess.
Original person would be fine.
Original person doesn't work there.
Well, the original law firm.
Yeah, because you're asking, you're asking the law firm to say, well, what you wrote back then, is it correct today?
Absolutely, that's when you say, that's, yes.
Second eyes, you would, whatever the council wants to do.
Mm-hmm.
What is it? I mean, what do you want?
Oh, that's the original law firm.
Okay.
Original law firm, McLory?
Because the person may not be, but the law firm is.
He's not, he's actually, uh, what, supervisor for Plymouth Township?
Yeah. Running for the town.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next, we have communications, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, Youth Voter Encouragement, I'm sorry, Youth Voter Engagement Day proclamation.
All right, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the city council, and I did want to include the mayor with his approval, as well as our city clerk and city treasurer, all elected officials, to declare the voter, the Youth Voter Engagement Day, which is July 1st, as declared to the city of Dearborn Heights, as moved in Agenda Item 12A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
And I'd like to acknowledge and thank Michael Goldman Brown Jr., who is here today. He is the co-founder of a nonprofit, Youth Engage 18. Sir, you're here, who assisted greatly. A lot of information that was shared, but really important to acknowledge the importance of our youth being involved in local government and all levels of government. And there's a listing here, and you can find this on the, uh, city's website, but there's, uh, listed down to 17 points of how to get involved, everything from writing a letter to speaking on issues that are important to you, to attending a town hall or attending a meeting. I'll let you go from there, if you don't mind, if you'd like to share a little bit before we vote, sir.
Absolutely, uh, thank you so much, uh, councilors, uh, community members, good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Goldman Brown Jr. Uh, I'm a recent graduate of Bloomfield Hills High School, and, um, myself and my co-founder, Zachariah Farah, founded, uh, Engage 18 back in February of this year, because we were trying to host a Democratic gubernatorial primary debate, and we couldn't receive any, uh, funding from our school, or, um, or, uh, we tried to reach out to sponsors, and so we had to fundraise independently to, uh, host this debate. And so, after we raised the $2,000 that it costs to host a debate in our auditorium, we had actually a surplus of money, and so we decided to use the rest of the money to work to engage more young people in politics. Um, the Democratic debate was the beginning of a series of debates, which, uh, next in line is a Republican gubernatorial debate, and afterwards will be a debate between the two winners of the primaries of the Democratic and Republican Party, uh, gubernatorial primaries. What we see at Engage 18 is that young people are truly disinvested and, uh, sort of not really encouraged to participate in the political process. Um, we struggle to get other students, uh, who are our peers and our friends, involved in politics, uh, aside from when there are sort of flashpoint moments. And politics is something that needs to be constant, in that we need to constantly involve ourselves in as, um, as students and as members of society. It's what forms the fabric of our democracy. And when you look at statistics, like the fact that in the midterm, less than 20% of young people between the ages of 18 and 34 will turn out to vote, or even when I talked to a pollster for a candidate running in the 9th District, um, who estimates that on August 7th, less than 6% of the electorate will be below the age of 30. That's quite frankly abysmal, given the fact that young people have so many ideas, so many things that we want, uh, other people to hear us out on. We have, we want our opinions to be heard in state houses, in county councils, in Washington, DC, and if we don't vote, if we're not engaged in our nation's political processes, that's not going to happen. So we'd like for July 1st to be declared Youth Voter Engagement Day as a celebration of the ratification of the 26th Amendment in 1971. The 26th Amendment lowered the voting age to 18 nationwide, and I believe it's a day that we should celebrate, and we should use it to cherish our right instead of taking it for granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have new business, business license renewal for high-grade steakhouse at 25240 Ford Road.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that we approve the business license renewal for high-grade steakhouse on Ford Road in Dearborn Heights, as outlined in 13A.
Second? Support by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I, I just had one, and I wanted to start by, uh, saying that throughout the, the academic year, we see so many great accomplishments from students, uh, throughout our school districts here in Dearborn Heights, but I did want to share one particular student right now, I don't know if our community is aware, we have a student that is in Washington, DC right now, from Annapolis High School. So I want to say congratulations to Dearborn Heights' very own Tanner Bonner, I don't know if everyone remembers him, he had a perfect ACT score. Do you remember him? All right, so he is, he was honored with, along with, I believe it's about 164 students that are chosen, and the United States Presidential Scholars Program, which was established in 1964 by an executive order of the president, and it is a program that recognizes and honors some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. The majority of the scholars are selected on a basis of broad academic achievement. So not just one subject, but several. And not just several academic, uh, subjects, but also what they do in the community through service. So he was honored in Washington, DC, his family was with him, along with, uh, the other students from throughout the country. So again, congratulations, well done, well earned, and thank you for representing Dearborn Heights.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's Councilman Muscat and I are Annapolis grads.
Annapolis graduates, yes.
We presented a, award to that young man at the, uh, District 7 Board Meeting. That's accomplishment.
I'd like to echo, uh, Councilman Hicks Clayton's remarks. Tanner happened to live four doors down from me, and I know him really well, he's a second generation Annapolis High School graduate, his dad went there, great kid, great family, and really proud, uh, of not only Annapolis, but Dearborn Heights and the state of Michigan also.
Councilor.
Councilman-
Oops, I had just two, two things, that's why I'm talking right now.
Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Um, I, uh, I was, I was confronted by, you know, a few residents in the last month about the Van Born Corridor progress, and I wanted to address it to the mayor, but I understand it's, you're just hearing this now, and if you want to make a statement now about it, or if you want, for our next meeting, have something prepared, uh, updating on the Van Born Corridor?
I'd probably do it at the next meeting, but as, uh, I am looking for volunteers who would like to serve, uh, the city of Taylor. We had a meeting in Dearborn Heights, and the, the Taylor Council asked that a steering committee be formed, and, uh, I was not aware of that originally, so we have been looking for individuals who might want to serve on that. If you are interested, or anybody watching this on TV, please let me know. Uh, I did make an approach to the plan commission I will be doing to the Board of Appeal, because there's certain city functions that make sense that they be on this, but, uh, we certainly, I would look forward to having a couple residents on it, that live in that area.
I have one other thing, um, I'm hosting a golf outing on August 4th at the newly-acquired Warren Valley Golf Course in Dearborn Heights, and it's, uh, it benefits an organization, 501(c) organization called Jamie's Kids, and Jamie happens to be my daughter, who, uh, passed away a year ago, shortly after giving birth to her fifth child. She was a single parent, and my wife and I are raising the five children right now. So I am both a young family member, raising your family, and a senior citizen, so I'm seeing both sides of the spectrum. And we're looking for golfers and sponsors, and again, it's August 4th, you can have more information, email address is Jamie's Kids, that's Jamie, like, aim, J-A-I-M-E, like we aim to please, Jamie's Kids, gmail.com. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Um, yes, I'd just like to mention a couple things about the upcoming election, we're about 40 days out, um, right now. We will be mailing the absentee ballots on Thursday. What I want to tell people is, um, the mail isn't quite like it used to be. When you return your ballots, please leave plenty of time, we're, we are meeting with the post office clerks, I was on a webinar with, with the post office and, um, talking with the state, and allow five days now. The, the days of mailing it at 12 o'clock and getting it the next day, um, aren't happening, so allow enough time for your ballots, if you return them by mail, to get here and get counted. Don't, don't put them in the mail on Saturday before the election, or Monday, and, you know, we, we receive far too many ballots past the deadline. With that being said, also, when we mail them out, we, we find, excuse me, I'm sorry, we find that although we, we take them to the post office in bulk, um, we attach special stickers to them that designate them as, as, um, election mail. Mr. Resident may get his ballot on Monday, and Ms. Resident may not get it till Wednesday. So what I'm asking you is, if you are, have applied for your absentee ballot and you are expecting it, we will be mailing it on Thursday. If you do not get it by the following Thursday, give us a couple days, give the mail a couple days to get there. But if you don't have it by Thursday, call us right away, so we can reissue that ballot, we could, we could spoil the one issued, we can get you another one. Um, far too often, we, we, um, get a resident that waits till the last minute, and then is not, um, been able to get a ballot in a timely fashion. So, um, with that being said, um, we will be mailing those, and, and if you have applied for an absentee ballot and you don't get it from a week from Thursday, um, the clerk's office, 791-3432. The last thing I want to say is, do not forget, in returning your absentee ballot, that you sign that envelope. Sign that envelope. If you don't sign that envelope, um, we got to call you, you're going to have to come in and sign it, or once again, we'll have to spoil that ballot and send you another one. So, um, take caution, um, also, folks, if I could just have another second, Madam Chair, it's worth mentioning that this is a primary election, and you can only vote in one party. Do not spoil your ballot, don't, uh, you may find a, a candidate you like in a certain, um, party and another candidate you like in another party. By our election laws, you can't vote for both. So, um, the Libertarian Party has achieved ballot status, um, so they will be on the ballot also. So you have the choices of voting Republican, Democratic, and Libertarian, but you don't have the choices of voting one from each party, or, so, um, please, um, um, take some caution in that, and, and we, we want to make sure that everybody's ballot is counted, and, and I've got a lot of things going through my mind, so please bear with me. But the last thing I'll say is, tomorrow, um, with our wonderful, um, emergency manager, Mr. Ankrapp, has arranged for me to be filming a television show, which will be on cable, and it will talk about the election process, and, um, also about voting and, and making sure you're registered in time, you must register 30 days before the election. So, um, that show, um, will be filmed tomorrow morning, and, and will be on cable, um, if Mr. Ankrapp can enlighten us, maybe within a week or so.
About a week.
About a week. So, so please, um, share that with your, your fellow residents, that, you know, we're, we're trying everything we can to get out there and, and let you know how to vote, how to get your vote counted, and, and, uh, through the electoral process. So I thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me, um, to talk about the upcoming election.
You're welcome. Councilman Muscat?
I got a few things. First one, uh, is our, how are we standing on getting that liquor license for the golf course? We're now in, heading into July, and we still haven't officially purchased the golf course.
As the, um, I've actually been working on that quite a bit, and essentially where we are right now is, the application will be submitted after we end up getting proof of financial responsibility, and we're using the same insurance company, and we're supposed to use the same insurance company, that the concessionaire that we have there is currently using, we were supposed to be listed as an additional insured, and then we found out that they did not do that. So we're going through that process.
Now, our, I, I had heard the words of transfer, and, you know, looking at the state website on the liquor license, they don't do transfers anymore, it's all new liquor licenses.
No, what this would be is a transfer, and it's a transfer that's done by substituting us in the place of the county, difficulty because the county, this paperwork with the concessionaire was, uh, problematic, I'll just put it that way.
But how much longer is it going to take? Because we're missing a boat. I mean, we had, you know, there was a fire at, at the Redford Golf Course, and, and they lost a lot of concessions in their, in their banquet facility that we could have absorbed ourselves, we could have reached out to them and said, hey, look, we'll take all of this stuff on.
Yeah, I'm hoping for-
And we're missing a boat here.
30 to 35- Thirty to thirty-five days from now, but the difficulty with regard to that is, I don't control the insurance company. And it's not, we don't do this through MMRMA. They will over-insure us beyond the liquor liability insurance, but it has to be done with this particular company, and it's taking some time.
It's the same vendor.
Correct.
But different owners. So we have to, and they, the concessionaire has to work with us, and maybe that's not happening. Maybe they're...
Well, they had a problem getting it, and then they didn't inform me that they didn't get what he told me we were going to be getting. And then I found that out, and then I followed up with the company, and the company said, we'll get on it, but we have the insurance companies in New Jersey. So it's taking some time to end up getting through this stuff, and we don't control them.
Couple for them, if you don't mind, please.
Go ahead, Councilman.
A while back, a few months ago, I had asked about looking into the possibility of getting left-hand turn signals at Gully and Servy Lane. And again, today, I stopped at the light at Ford Road, headed east coming here, and a lady almost got drilled, making a left-hand turn, by a car that just went through the yellow light. And it's getting, somebody's going to get killed. Those two intersections, at Servy Lane and Gully, I really believe need left-hand turn signals there. There's just not enough time for people to make left-hand turns. So I would appreciate if somebody really looked into that. Then the other thing is, the utility pole at Amboy and Wilson, that was almost down in the intersection, is still up there, being tied up with a rope. A rope, okay? It's time for Edison to get moving on that, and also the utility pole at John Daly and Wilson. That thing's leaning, got to be twenty, thirty degrees, for God's sakes, into the middle of the road. And I had mentioned that about a year ago, and I haven't seen any movement on that. And my one last thing is, where do we stand on the ice arena? We had a meeting a few weeks ago. We said we were close. Are we any closer to getting that?
We're having a meeting tomorrow morning with Mr. Mackey, his attorney, and Mr. Grebel and I are meeting to talk about the new concept and start negotiations.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Kasten?
I'd just like to thank one of our Tifa board members, Don Willis and his wife. They got some students from the Westwood School District and put flowers down near our Beach Daily Business District sign in the south end, and they're going to maintain it. They're cutting the grass and decorating around the sign, so a nice volunteer effort for Don Willis's wife and the students that helped out.
Madam Chair?
Mayor?
Three items. One, to the person in the back, we, I recommended the council approved. We have put over $2 million, at least $2 million, in healthcare, and we took fund balance. Hopefully, we'll have some fund balance this year, and we'll continue to build it up. And I am actively working on a solution, and I've been in contact with the city of Dearborn people as to how they've done their solution. So we are actively working on that. Hate, and I probably might cross the line, but I have to say that that Resolution 11(c) was an insult to every policeman and fireman that has ever served in this city. I just can't believe it. Lastly, I'd like to ask the council chair, we spent all last Tuesday in meetings, there were all investors. It's not on the agenda. My department heads are telling me that we lost the chance of being involved in the program.
It's my understanding that we have till July 20th to make that decision, and I have been talking to council members, trying to come up with a solution of what, if they can agree on how they want to go about this.
Joe, you told me the deadline was this, end of this month.
That was your deadline, though, right?
No, that wasn't my deadline. The deadline is July 20th, when you draw, so the council...
Right.
That's when we lose all opportunities.
Right. Yeah, I will...
My deadline was June, the end of June, to have the contractors paid.
Right. Yeah, we will be addressing that by the next council meeting, if not sooner.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, once the companies are approved, there's a fair amount of paperwork that has to be completed and submitted to HUD. Am I not correct before...
Can't have nothing to do with HUD.
I don't think HUD is involved in this at all.
Or a fair amount of paperwork that has to be done and approved before the deal is done. If those houses go the regular auction, they'll all become renters.
You know, Council Chair, speaking on that, I asked a question at the study session about the involvement of CDBG in this, and I'm afraid that our, CDBG's involvement with this is going to turn sour. I'm really afraid. That's my opinion, okay? And I'm going to leave it at that.
So this one, Council? Go ahead, Director Hashem.
Councilman Musket, I did discuss this with the mayor, and I think what we left it at is, the mayor can choose anybody in the city, any director, any department, any person that worked for him to conduct this project. If I'm the problem, or CDBG is the issue at this point, I can leave it up to the administration to pick someone to take care of this. However, the deadline is fast approaching. Whether I take care of this, and if you don't like me to, or the mayor doesn't want me to, I'll be more than happy to step aside and let somebody else carry this forward. However, July 20th is not the deadline, with all due respect, Madam Chair. That's when the county takes over and we lose all ability to purchase these properties. There is a lot of work to be done, whoever does it, whether it's me or somebody else in the city of Dearborn Heights. There's deeds to be acquired, there's property to be located. The city has to make a choice of which property it wants or it doesn't want. And then after that, we have to issue new deeds to the buyers. We have to put liens on those. All of that takes time from the attorney, from the administration, and from whoever wants to do or take care of this going forward. So I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Ebbelen?
I'd like to suggest to the director, and I'm just curious, Director, if we set up, provided that the council approves this, if we set up a meeting hypothetically, just a special meeting for either Tuesday or maybe a different day, because, I tell you guys, the last thing we want is a city to lose this to Wayne County and just have people from, you know, all over coming in and, you know, not doing what we'd like, obviously.
I don't have a problem setting up a meeting next week, but we do have the holiday on Wednesday, so let's do it maybe the 5th, after the holiday, so people are out of town.
But with the 5th, I mean, I have no problem, the 5th, I'm just wondering, I mean, he's one of the most, is that enough time?
If you're showing up at any time, if the Councilman Musket likes somebody else to do it.
No, I...
Madam Chair, please. This...
The thing I'd like to mention, to remind you, saying, is there's only twenty-five houses left in the city of Dearborn Heights. It's no longer a hundred and thirty-six houses. The list has dropped.
Okay.
People redeemed them?
All right, thank you.
Can I just say one thing?
We've got more.
Can I just say one other thing?
Let me have the floor for a moment, please. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Madam Chair, you know, once upon a time, we used to be civil with each other. Unfortunately, this day and age, we're not hearing it so much. Mister Mayor, all due respect, I've always tried to be respectful to you. You continue your onslaught, and I'm really, Madam Chair, I ask you to please keep order and to not allow council members to be attacked.
Okay.
The back-and-forth argument, the discussions, whatever's going on, you know, I'm going to tell you right now, I've fully been supportive of police and fire, and always will be. My son is a firefighter. This is about over-taxation. It should be discussed. There's no harm. As a council member, it is our responsibility to ask those questions. If you disagree with us asking the questions, we're not doing our job. You've been in this seat. So again, let's be civil, and again, through the chair, keep the order, and that's all I'm asking. I think our residents deserve that. Thank you.
At this point, we're asking for comments from council members?
Can I just say one thing about the CAP program real quick? Correct me if I'm wrong, but once you make the selection, then we still have to come back in front of you to get your approval for the purchase. Is that correct?
I'd be willing to accelerate the process.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I'd be willing to work and get it going as quick as possible.
Properties have to be purchased, as well as the contractors have to be selected. Then the contractors have to go through the process of selecting the properties. Then we get the deed, then we're going to have to give them a deed, and they're going to have quite a bit that they need to do.
Then you know what, can we, Madam Chair, I mean, can we, okay, I don't know if we schedule, but like, let's say this Thursday, or this Friday, or next Monday?
It'd have to be next week.
I have to say, with regard to myself, I will be out of town from Thursday through Monday.
So let's do it after the 4th, like maybe the 5th?
I mean, if you want to, on the 3rd, because city offices will be closed on the 6th, and that might make things difficult in terms of being able to pull it off.
So is that, is Tuesday?
It doesn't matter when.
It's coming Tuesday?
If I could just say this, because I'm looking at a calendar, July 20th, we'll only have one council meeting before that date, that's the 10th. And at that meeting, and I remember, John, you can correct me, we have to get your approval to even purchase them. So all the other stuff has to be done before we even get to that final step of getting your approval.
Right, that would be, you know, around the 5th of July, and then vote on it the next week.
You'd need a special meeting to...
Right, special meeting.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
Can we, do we have to have a meeting to vote on who we would like to select, or can we do this individually, by email?
No, no. You can not do that.
That crosses open meeting.
No how-to vote by email, no deliberations by email or outside of the council.
If it's a one-on-one situation?
One-on-one, you can speak to each other without developing a consensus. This is really...
It has to be a meeting with the residents' access to it.
I'm just trying to do something, we could do something by the end of the week. I mean, we, I couldn't make my five picks and personally just send it to, say, council chairman with my five picks, and then she tabulates all five and...
She could, she cannot do that and still comply with the Open Meetings Act.
I'm just trying to accelerate this.
Okay, well, we'll figure out something.
I just wanted to be clear that that, the meeting on the 10th, our meeting of July 10th, would have to be the meeting where you voted as a body to purchase.
That would have been planned on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to have to do something ahead of time. All right, Councilman Kasten?
Yeah, regarding the CAP program, I mean, there was, did submitted, some bidders did it properly, some didn't. There was a recommendation made, and we should have voted on it one way or the other. This work could have been done, but, and it was done by persons with more expertise on this issue than ourselves. I've been on the council for quite some years, and we've always, Ron Eamon would come to us when he was Economic Development Director, and I don't recall, but it's Carmen before land. And I know there was some funding included for administrative costs, but it's something we need to, business, we need to act on and take care of.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council members? We have public announcements next.
Hello, City Council. I'd just like to say that the tax bills will be mailed out June 29th, which is this Friday. Taxes are payable in many different ways, but they're due by August 15th without any penalty or interest. You can mail it in with the envelope provided. You could come into City Hall on Monday through Thursday between eight and five. You can put the envelope in our drop box outside of City Hall. Dearborn Federal Savings Bank branches in Dearborn Heights are accepting the payments. Or you can go online, and there's a small convenience fee to use some type of electronic medium to make payment. The second thing regarding the houses, if we don't have the list, I have not seen the list from Wayne County of the houses that are for sale, nor have we received any communication. So those dates that are being around, there's not something that I have seen yet, but it sounds like Joe is kind of in the loop now. But I think if possible, maybe there could be a blanket resolution, giving the administration the ability to buy the houses that we need to do, you know, at that 10th meeting, if we don't have the individual houses. Because sometimes the turnaround on this is very quick, you know, I mean, within like a week or two weeks, and it depends on when we receive it and when there's a council, your agendas are together or not together, you know, so I would think that possibly some type of blanket resolution would be possible.
There would also need to be a monetary amount attached to that, because we have to pay the minimum bid in order to basically obtain the property. So there would actually have to be some sense of a range for the amount, as well as maybe this blanket resolution the treasurer's referring to.
Yeah. And then finally, I'd just like to say, the council has approved for us to make inter-fund loans, and we hadn't had to do that this year. It doesn't look like we'll have to do it. It looks like Wayne County will be giving us the delinquent check this Thursday, and it doesn't look like we'll have to do any inter-fund borrowings from other funds. And so I appreciate the council giving me that ability, should we needed to do that. Part of this was not just because of the sale of the golf course. I think even if the golf course would have closed, and we would have had the money there, we would have had the money available to make it through this year-end without having doing inter-fund loans. And so it was, you know, accomplishment to the budget and how things are looking from the cash-wise. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, public announcements for the city?
Yes, Council, I hear we're talking about the timeframe that you guys have to do with the CAP program, but what you have not taken into consideration is maybe the Wayne County, because they are also a role player in this whole thing. And while you might think you may have ten days to deal with it, perhaps...
Is this a public announcement, or are you in the public comments? Because I call public, okay, public comments, go ahead, give us your name and address.
Ali Anani, 6795 Fairwood Drive, Dearborn Heights. Wayne County is a role player in the CAP program, so therefore, while you might think you have ten days to deal with it, maybe they're not available, or maybe they have their own agendas. So you've got to take that into consideration, allow the proper time. So as a Dearborn Heights resident, I also think that these should not go to the county, and that the council should move a little faster on this issue, because it's really...
Yeah, we will be doing that. Any other public comments? State your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Councilwoman, council members, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ahmed Shabani, from 12740 Westwood Avenue, in Dearborn, 48126. So again, I'm standing here before you, inquiring about the CAP program, because when we, when we became aware, as a company, of this process, we had deadlines to meet by, you know, end of April, went through the whole RFP that I believe that had been thoroughly discussed and approved by this body. And we spent, obviously, hours and hours, you know, in preparing that, making sure that we comply. And we watched it competitively, we want to win. We made the funds available, we made the process available, and then, you know, then, to my understanding, that was supposed to come to this body for approval. And that was managed by your administrative, you know, departments, you know, whether the finance, whoever was in charge of this. Come to learn last week, there was a special session for this, which is fine. I think this is a new pilot program, I guess, that council people want to be, you know, more thorough, aware, who's participating in this program, making sure that the participants are credible, and, I mean, rights are so that you want to know that this program is successful, and we spent three, four hours discussing this, and we've, most of us, all of us, answered all the questions. I was expecting today, we'll come to this meeting with an item on the agenda, given the deadlines, from understanding with the county. I, as a company, we basically dropped other programs, because we want to make sure the pilot program is successful. We lost other opportunities, and we moved our team with expectation that this program is successful, that we're going to prove ourselves, so we can be, you know, available next year for this program. So I'm really disappointed, but I understand, you know, what it takes for you to approve this. So I would really, you know, urge you to, I mean, I'm not sure why you cannot put this on agenda today. I know you approved the agenda today, but you've already heard, everybody, you've seen the RFPs, you have the recommendation at the table. I don't think there's an issue why a vote cannot be done today. So can, the legal department can move forward on acquiring the homes. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come to the podium, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and limit it to three minutes, please.
Since I can't hear anybody else, I wanna make sure I can be heard. My name is Ned Apigian, I reside at 5959 Rosetta, in Dearborn Heights. I have two issues that I'd like to talk about, and I won't talk about them long. I've mentioned them before, the issue of our tree ordinance. And I've asked the council previously to look at a submission I presented before, and nothing seems to be done. My neighbors bemoan themselves every time they see legacy trees being cut down, and they come to me, and they go, "Did you see that?" "Yeah, I seen it, I asked you to come to the meetings, and you won't come." They don't pay attention to one person. If you get five or six people talking one after another, maybe they'll listen. Well, what's happened on the corner of Elizabeth and Longview, I was here several months ago telling you about houses on that, that corner where about 40 trees were cut. The problem is with our own Department of Public Works. We, they'll let you cut anything you want, if you keep it on the edge of the property line and the city line, that's for sure. Bill told me that. They're cutting trees in the middle of lots that aren't bothering anybody's house, three giant ones on the corner. Now, the ordinance I proposed is, a person has, has an average mortgage lifespan, I used to say seven years, and one day Dave Abdullah corrected me, it's more like five. Which means, when you own your house, you're the steward of this property, and you can't go around doing everything you want to it. The mayor will recall, the, the guy that cut down a grove on the corner of Elizabeth and Bonner, and the police came, they dragged him off, but the grove is gone. Now, it's a simple fix. You allow, when your average mortgage holder is there only five years, and that guy cut down a grove of trees, he recently sold this property, I was told, for $960,000. I don't know if it was true, somebody told me that. So what happened to his stewardship? He made his money, he's gone. And what are we left with? This is supposed to be the Arbor City. This place is a joke. I live in a natural maple and oak forest, and people are coming there, and they're cutting these trees. I don't know why they don't go to a neighborhood where there's no trees, since they hate trees so much, but that's up to you to stop them. Now, the rules should be simple. If you wanna make an expansion on your home, you can cut down any tree that's in the way of your expansion, in the way of your pool, in the way of your driveway, or anything you wanna do to improve your property. But if that tree is not bothering anything on your property, and you think it might fall down on you someday, or you don't like leaves falling, because you don't wanna rake them, that's another issue. Okay, so we need, I've asked you to invite me to a, to a study session, the ordinance I've given to all you people, you gotta look at those changes, and you gotta force people to produce site plans.
Okay, thank you.
So you know where every tree, every addition is. Second issue...
I'm sorry, you've got your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council Chair?
Councilman Husky?
You know, speaking of that ordinance that Mr. Apigian is speaking about, you know, it's very difficult. I, I see it being done, and most time it's being done on Saturday and Sunday, and I think the only thing we can do is call the police. It happens all the time on the weekends like that, a lot of it on Sunday. And, you know, it's no, I don't think it's any fault of the ordinance department or DPW that that's being happening, it's just people don't care. And I don't know if the fine is not big enough, or what, so something we can expand on, on a, on a future date.
State your name, address, in three minutes, please.
Zohair Abdulha, Dearborn Heights. I have a couple issues, and I hope not to exceed the three minutes. I have a question for the treasurer of the city. When he submitted the actuary report, and how much amount of money he needed for the pension for Act 345, can he tell us how much was on that report?
I don't have the report with me, but I think it's what was submitted under the budget for the contribution to the police to buy a pension.
Was it eight million, or was 3.7 million?
The report is the contribution to pension was three million, and I don't have the report in front of me.
Thank you very much. The city built a bathroom and parkland on an Arbor Trail. And I did some work on it, when I heard the number, $240,000 approximately, a bathroom, with three stalls, for women, and three stalls for men, and little storage room, with electric box, and I think 60 or 80 gallon tank of hot water. I asked a friend of mine, who is an architect, to go look at it, and give me an estimate if he's going to do the same job with the same specification. I got two proposals. One was $80,000. The highest I got was $98,000. There was an existing bathroom on that site. According to the rules, we should follow first to expand one of the bathrooms which are in existence, to make it ADA, you know, meet the requirement of ADA. My understanding, the rules wasn't followed, HUD was not given permission to the city, did not give permission to the city, to do the job, which means, first, we exceeded the money, which is 240, we should have never spent more than 100,000. Somebody did something, either, you know, whatever you wanna take it, but I ask, you know, for something to be done about this, because the city might lose the 240,000, because we did not follow the HUD rules, and we might take it out of the general fund. So I appreciate if you look into this, because you approved this money, and I believe there is something wrong there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Here is a copy, and as a courtesy, may I?
State your name, address, and limit it to three minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Chairwoman. My name is Rashida Talib. I am an attorney with the Sugar Law Center for Economic and Social Justice. Thank you so much to the council members, to mayor, and of course, the clerk. I spoke to, I had a meeting, a wonderful meeting with the mayor, it was very, thank you so much for your generosity and your time. The mayor knows I've been working on this lawsuit in regards to the Hedley Amendment. For many people that might not know, the case is currently sitting in the Court of Appeals, and it's basically, by, right now, we are claiming, correctly, I believe, that the state is in violation of the Michigan Constitution regarding the Hedley Amendment. Our complaint basically states that the Michigan is engaging what we call an illegal shift, and I know Councilman Constant knows what I'm talking about, when regards to how they figure out the formula, when they pay out to our local municipalities and to our cities, they're actually including payments to charter schools, county road commissions, and others from truck line roads funds, that are so-called towards the formula, but we're not actually getting that money. We're not getting that actual money directly to our cities, and they're putting that in the calculation, and I know the treasurer knows what I'm talking about. Basically, if you look at how they're putting the, the revenue together and saying, this is the way the revenue sharing should be, the fact is, it's very, very, very true that the formula is completely flawed, and it's unconstitutional. We truly believe that shift is overcalculation on their part for the state, and the case right now is currently sitting before the Court of Appeals. Right now, the Michigan Municipal League is supporting the case, as well as cities like Southgate, Harper Woods, Gross Point Woods. And so I wanted to make you all aware of it, and then also offer up whether or not still time, whether or not the city of Dearborn Heights would like to join us in fighting back on these miscalculations by the state in regards to revenue sharing. Again, my name is Rashida Talib, and I appreciate your time. Big props to the city clerk for doing that, that cable show thing. Please do mention, there's two elections on one ballot for the congressional race, there's a, and that's one of the biggest issues, I think we're gonna face, a lot of confusion out there, when I'm talking to residents about that.
Okay.
There's a special on the regular. Thank you so much for your time.
Good to see my former colleague in the state legislature, former Representative Rashida Talib. She did a lot of work, passing mortgage foreclosure reform, and a lot of environmental issues for the city of Detroit. She did a great job.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna, I live on Salem Lane, Dearborn Heights. First, I want to say thank you for conducting the first reading of the ordinance on the commission of women and girls, and I look forward to the, the special meeting as well. And I also wanna give a shout out to Director Jack McIntyre for being super patient with me, because I'm very persistent and annoying about information on the community garden. And I do have one question. So I was thinking today about farmers markets, and how our city doesn't have one. So have a few questions. One, has our city ever had farmers markets? And then can we have one? Like, what are the things that are stopping our city from doing farmers markets, and then if there's anything we can do to start those up? Let me know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Hashem, I'm the Director of the Economic Development in Dearborn Heights. I have just a quick comment that I'd like to make. I am responsible, at least my department is responsible, for taking care of all the federal money that we receive through our, through the federal government. That includes HUD's money. We follow all the rules that we're supposed to follow, and if there's something that we're not sure of, we have attorneys that we call upon, and we have also consultants that we call on, on issues that we're not sure of. However, we do follow all the rules that we're supposed to follow. And Plant of Moran does come in once a year, and they'll be here in a couple of weeks to audit our files. They go through every single penny that we spend, how we spent it, and whether HUD approved it or not. We also get audited by HUD once a year, just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor. Thank you.
Your name and...
Nice evening. I was under the impression that the CARE program's gonna be on the agenda today, since we're getting very, very close to the deadline. And as you all looked and see the applications, it took a lot of time and effort and resources to fill all that information, and we worked hard. The body approved the program back in March or April, if I'm not mistaken, and we had a special study session last week, I guess. So I was under the impression that it's gonna be on the agenda today. So the, the only concern is I urge you to move faster on that, because...
Yes, we've already noted that, and are gonna be on that.
Thanks so much.
I appreciate your, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was just reminded by the mayor's assistant, Ms. Lazlo, that Dorothy Schultz, who was Al Schultz's wife, resident of the South End, longtime Kowanian, involved in a lot of community activities, passed away just a few days ago, and just to like everyone to remember Al Schultz and his deceased wife Dorothy, in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, thank you.
Jack McIntyre, I live on Hazleton Street, I'm also the Director of Ordinance and Animal Control. I, first, I wanna apologize. I, I can't believe that I've gotten to this point where I'm so frustrated, almost on a daily basis. I used to enjoy coming to the council meetings, I felt like it was an opportunity for information to get out there. I just feel like every day is a different surprise. And you have to ask yourself at some point, I don't wanna minimize my apology by making excuses, because that would be the wrong thing to do. But you have to ask your, you know, some, something was said at the last meeting about we have to protect the interests of the employees, and I think it was intended that they meant the union employees. But I wanna remind everybody here that I'm an employee too. And I, I give a lot of myself to this job. Before Chuck came into our lives, I was here every morning at 7:00 o'clock. I can't get here at 7:00 anymore, because he has to do his business before we get here, but I, I'm usually here at 7:00, and I'm, I'm usually gone by 7:00 at night. I, I do at least 10 to 12 hours a day. I work every Friday. I'm on call Saturday and Sunday. Since December, I have not taken a vacation. I've taken one day off. And the reason I took that day off is a family member died in a house fire, and I took one day off. I still entertain phone calls all day long. I still answer emails. And you have to ask yourself at some point, and, and I appreciate what Councilman Abdullah said, that we need to get to the nuts and bolts of what it is. You know, when I worked at Comerica, and I can talk about Annette Starr, because she was one of the best employees I ever had when I was a manager at Comerica, Annette has since passed away. But I'm really proud of the fact that I have staff meetings every week, and some of you have been to them, and I did the same thing when I was a manager at Comerica, where there was 300 people that reported indirectly or directly to me. And at the end of a meeting one day, Annette said to me, "Jack, I have a question, am I ever late for work?" And I said, "No." And she said, "Am I, is my performance suffering?" I said, "No, Annette, not at all. You're, you're one of my best employees." And she said, "Why do I have to continue to sit in these meetings, where I know that what you're talking about is one particular person, or maybe two particular persons? Why do the rest of us have to sit through this?" And that's what I, I wanna ask, is if, if, if I was doing a poor job, the mayor, I know, would talk to me about it. But I feel like I'm being judged by a lot of different people in my performance. I was asked to show up a shortcoming of what was happening in terms of the city cuts, and, and I, and I assisted Bill Zimmer with that. And as a result, I, you know, the grass is being cut, and that's really, at the end of the day, that's what the most important thing is, we, we want the grass cut. But no one is doing anything to be malicious. I work with all these people every single day. This is why I come to work and get paid $54,000 a year, when I made a lot more at a previous job, because I love this city. I moved here when I was two years old, I know I'm over my three limits. I moved here when I was two years old. My dad was on the, the police department, retired as a, as a detective from this, from this police department. In fact, my brothers and I, when we were, I have five brothers, my mother lined us all up with little white shirts and blue shorts, and marched us in front of City Hall, because at that time, moms of police officers and the children didn't have survivor benefits. So if my dad was shot, and the, you know, in, in doing his job, there was nothing for us as a family. So I'm committed, 100%. I, that's why I chose to come here, because I know that things need to get done, and we need to work together effectively. We say things together, and then it seems like we leave this room and we do something entirely different. All those people that I spent all day long with in City Hall, I consider them my friends, whether they're, they have a, a position that's lower than me, or a position that's higher than me. We worked very well together. This, I have to be honest with you, feels so confusing. It just, I can't think of any other word, it feels very confusing. I really hope that we leave here tonight, and if it's, if it's soul-searching, or if it's praying, or if it's talking to someone in your life, we have to do better. We have to do better than what we're doing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh.
Thank you.
Hang on, thank you. July 8th, Sunday, low-cost vaccination clinic, anybody's welcome, you can tell all your family, whether they're from Dearborn Heights, or anywhere in this county, any other county, $5 for vaccinations, $5 for rabies shots. You can get your animal microchips, so that if we find them, we can bring them safely home to you, instead of taking them to the shelter. Both our treasurer's office and our clerk's office will be open that day to issue licenses, and I just wanna remind folks of that.
Where we'll be at?
Thank you.
Right on, right on the front lawn of City Hall, starting at 9:00 AM.
July 8th?
Is that a Sunday? I hope I had the date right.
It is.
Double check.
8th is a Sunday.
Oh, and I said something a little snarky at the last meeting, and I just wanna be clear, I had people volunteering to help me at the clinic, and it had nothing to do with overtime. In fact, Marion and the HR department refuses to get paid, even though she's entitled to get paid. So to Dana Flomant, I wanna apologize. I, I, I said something that was inappropriate, it was not directed to insult you, Dana, and so I apologize.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I'd like to, on behalf of myself and most of us here, you know, we have some fine directors in Dearborn Heights. And Director McIntyre is one of the finest in responding to someone's calls. He gets hundreds of calls a day, I imagine, about issues. And he more than not looks into them and not only that, he gets back with you. And if you like his decision or not, he is very proactive. And for him to say that, you know, we don't respect him, he's gotta realize that we do and he does a fine job for Dearborn Heights.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure.
Yeah, move to adjourn.